I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the March 20, Tiverton School Committee meeting. Am I close enough for people to hear? Okay, good. Thank you. So, this evening's format will be a little bit different in that we will have a report from Dr. Joseph Arardi regarding the community assessment as part of the superintendent search from 6:00 to 6:30. At 6:30, the committee will go into executive session for approximately half hour to discuss the search process and then we'll go, come back into open session for sort of our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. So, Dr. Arardi?
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. For those in the audience, there's a copy. If you don't have a copy, you have a copy. There's a few extras on the table. Let me start by thanking Carolyn Mendez, and Carolyn was just terrific. And my takeaway from what I believe I know of your central office is that there is not a lot of downtime. And for her to take on the additional task and always say yes to anything and everything that I asked, I just wanted to start there. And Carolyn, thank you for all of the extra effort that you put forth for the town of Tiverton. Members of the school committee, I have, and I'm not saying this because I think it sounds smart, I really like Tiverton, Rhode Island. I really do. I'll tell you why.
The common thing that I heard over and over and over again was that folks stayed in Tiverton, went back to Tiverton, and it's all around Tiverton public schools. So if I heard it once, I heard it 500 times that I'm a graduate of Tiverton, and it came from 3-year-olds, 40-year-olds, 5-year-olds, 6-year-olds, and 7-year-olds. And that piece is really important when you look to move quickly.
The executive summary of the community profile is in front of you. And...
As recently as today, with a meeting with the middle school faculty.
And earlier this afternoon, I had a terrific open meeting in the Tiverton Public Library. It was a drop-in meeting, and I wasn't free for a moment. It was great. We had a great conversation with the moms that were there. There were actually 18 separate meetings that were held over the last two months. I've had a chance to meet dozens of parents.
A great majority of your faculty and staff and students.
And community members who chose to be involved, inclusive of 56 surveys that were taken over that time. And what I found...
Was information that in most cases, I didn't have to perseverate as far as what I was listening to. Many folks were very direct, and that's not a bad thing, but they were very direct in their student messages when we followed.
I always frame the conversation about what's happening in the future, not the present and not in the past, because the superintendent search is looking forward to that new person. So therefore, I'd like to, if I could, take a couple of minutes and comment on what I believe I found to be the profile from the community perspective of your next superintendent. In regards to the skill set that we spoke about most often, your community is looking for someone who is really smart with instruction, with K-12 instruction. They're looking for somebody who is confident, and they're looking for somebody who is really astute in two different frames, the political frame and the fiscal frame. In nearly every meeting that I had where people were relaxed and felt comfortable in sharing, they talked about the political frame and they talked about the fiscal frame. I've learned more than I ever thought I would know in my lifetime about the referendum that increases my ballot. So I got that piece. Continuing with the skills, the last thing that I place down, I think, is an important piece.
That your community building of your new superintendent has a little bit to do around perseverance and almost that grit and determination where if it doesn't work the first time and you believe it's right and your plan is solid, stay with it. And that represented the great majority of the information that we've brought forward.
Character traits, I think you would expect. And if your new school leader doesn't possess the character traits of being truthful, of being fair, being honest, compassionate. I got a kick out of number five, though. Lots of conversation around common sense and sense of humor, that folks really want somebody that they can connect to, relate to, and have a good conversation with. If you turn your hand out over, I want to comment on the information that I gathered pertaining to the Tiverton greatest success. I heard some extraordinary stories about students who were part of this community, saves, and I use the word saves, meaning a youngster who could have been going the wrong way, but teachers reaching out, staff reaching out, certified and non-certified staff recognizing the need, and all of a sudden, there's a pivot and a turn, and the youngster's back on track. I heard that often, and I think that you folks, I don't know what the design was or is, but you have a greater number of outstanding people that work in your district than most places. You just do. And that's from discovery. It's not from people telling me, that's from discovery. So you should be very proud of that. So from, I think the greatest success that was shared with me was your student, that people believe that your K-12 experience is a really nice experience for youngsters. Further success that was defined as all layers of your staff, certified, non-certified, from top to bottom. The third item that I list, I think, school committee members should pay attention to, because there appeared to me to have a growing concern, in some cases frustration, with really trying to maintain and go forward with what staff believes to be resources that are not as plentiful as they were in the past. So the success around that is somehow, someway, the things are still getting done. But there's a frustration piece to that, too, that I think you really need to be careful with. And the last piece that I want, the community and school partnerships was a piece. And the last piece I spoke about when I opened my comments was that whole generational pride. Does that mean I have to stop, Dr. Larkin? Do I have my five, that was my five-minute warning? Okay.
No, I'm trying to arrange a voice scout.
No, I say that jokingly. When I was in Newtown, the buzzer went off, you had to stop, pull yourself to the sit hall, go back and sit down. The generational pride piece is really important. And I had that conversation with a number of your applicants. And when that's in place, watch the district stay and go forward. Greatest challenges, and this won't surprise you, lots of, probably in every meeting that I had, there were conversations around the dollar. And you know what? If I was consulting in contiguous communities, if I was consulting in Connecticut or Rhode Island or Mass, we're all having the same conversation. This is not unique to Tiverton, Rhode Island. The local support for the dollar, the state's support, and the federal questions around the dollar. Item two is a school committee asterisk, that conversations particularly with faculty and staff, concern around holding on to and retaining key staff members. Some of that conversation would be reduced to salary, and some of that conversation, there was some frustration, not in great pockets, but there was some frustration. So I think I needed to share that with you. Continuing challenges, the data collection is the greatest challenge, Tiverton community is to share the leadership opportunity to create and empower multiple stakeholders that would understand what is needed for teaching and learning and climate and culture. Depending on your school was a dependence on my takeaway of climate and culture, but I think your new superintendent needs to pay attention to that. I will talk a little bit about some additional comments, but clearly, what I heard also is that they're hoping that your new school leader is visible, is positive, and deeply vested into this community. In addition, I bold printed three items, because I thought those were repetitive and needed special attention, that to the success of your new superintendent, and I think to the continued success of the school committee, that there's an outline and an understanding by the school community and the community at large of balance and partnership and role and responsibility between your new superintendent and the school committee. The present faculty and staff, shared information that they just want to better understand. It wasn't a negative. They just want to better understand what's the role of the superintendent, what's the role of the school committee, and how can they better understand who's doing what. Item number two is probably the key item, I think, on adoption. And that's an item where maybe the message comes from me as your consultant, maybe it comes from Dr. Larkin as your school committee chair, or from the school committee at large. But I'm guessing I heard nearly in every meeting that I attended that it's so important for your new school leader, before making any substantive change, to go on a lengthy listening tour and a learning tour, and then bring back to you what they listened to and what they learned. The second piece to that is that, in most cases, the voice that was shared with me was a voice that they are hoping that what the superintendent is listening and learning is the same as the school committee, and that you move in partnership moving this district forward. And the third visit, the third bullet is really around visibility, and that they're hoping, particularly your certified staff, that your new superintendent is active and is vibrant and in classrooms every day. Additional information pertaining to the focus groups that I had, in my community meetings, your parent community, your business community, they're looking for a school leader who is not an 8:30 to 4:30 person. They want to see that person at your football games, they want to see that person in your drama productions, they want to see that person on a Saturday or Sunday in a community event. And that was over and over again, that was part of the conversation. So they are hoping that, it doesn't mean that your new leader has to live in town or be a resident town, but what, part of the message to me was, if the person doesn't live in town, that that came from your community. To continue, the issue around morale and climate and culture, their hope is that this person will come forward and not only say, but lead what they say. So it's really by demonstration that your new school leader, you can talk about climate and culture and morale, but that doesn't move the dial. What you have to do is demonstrate it. And that's what they're hoping that your new school leader will do, by every day, taking the opportunity to demonstrate what she is looking for or what he is looking for, and that becomes contagious with your leadership team, with your faculty, with your staff, and most importantly, with your community. Last two bullets are important, that the belief is that if this person doesn't have a backbone, it's not going to go well. And I think that's fair. I think that's fair. So really, the message behind the message is that a quiet confidence and a perseverance that you have to believe, if you're on the path, other folks will figure it out and you'll stay on that path, which is best for children. The last bullet is probably the most important bullet on the page, and that your new school leader has to understand and embrace every child. And the every child piece is that, kudos to the school committee, I heard wonderful things about your complex learners, that this district does amazing things with students that have special needs. And I think that's a real credit and a tribute to you and to the school community. The message that was brought to me was really around the only, the best way for the new school leader to fully understand the organization is to see it. And the see it piece really is around watching teachers teach and watching children learn. So I was really impressed with the participation, with the voice, the voice was not shy, and the consistency in the message, that folks in this community, particularly your school community, they see this as a real pivotal point for Tiverton public schools.
I want to share a little about the candidate pool, and then I'll answer a few questions.
For the sake of the audience and the community, I believe, I'm guessing this is on local access, my charge from the school committee was to really take a deep dive into Rhode Island in regards to recruiting and advertisement, make sure that everybody in New England had the opportunity to understand the opening, and also make sure that on a national presence, get the information out and see what happens. I mentioned to you, I think when we met the first time, that in most searches, could be as few as 10, as many as 20, is a good pool. And I was hopeful that through your reputation of Tiverton schools and some key opportunities that we could have to get this information out, that the pool would be, a pool that would be challenging to you. Challenging, meaning that when it's time for the interviews, you're hoping that you don't know where to go, because there are so many great candidates. So what I share with you is that 27 candidates expressed an interest, 21 completed their application on time, and the great majority of the 21 are sitting assistant superintendents and superintendents. I also need to share with you that I received a, more than a handful of calls from school leaders who, in the moment, are not in good spaces. And I didn't discourage them to apply, nor did I encourage them to apply. The recruitment that I tried to do for the Tiverton School Committee was to make sure that if folks are in a good space and looking to advance, that I supplied and provided them the information they needed to be an informed applicant. So the applicant pool understands, I think, the dynamics of the district, the strengths, some of the concerns in the district, they understand the, some of the issues around salary, around compensation, they understand the upside of community, and my sense is that the entire applicant pool are, they're probably waiting for tomorrow in hope, that they want to be selected as a candidate to be interviewed. For the community sense that process will go dark, that's the term that I use, starting this evening, meaning that the five school committees, five school committee members, you will take the enormous responsibility of doing all of the heavy lifting, and that will be done in confidentiality. And when you finish the process, you've gone through at least two, perhaps three rounds of interviews, and that you will not settle unless there is a candidate that you believe is the right fit for this community. That's an important piece also. So I'm pleased with the profile, I'm pleased with the applicant pool, and I'm pleased that we'll have a chance, a little bit later on this evening, in executive session, to drill down a little bit deeper. But I'd love to answer questions that you may have regarding the community profile or around the logistics of the application process, if you have any at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Arardi.
Sure.
If I open the floor, the questions from the committee members. Mrs. Black?
No.
Ms. Payback?
No.
Yeah, I want to express our thanks for this preliminary part of the process.
Okay.
You've done a lot of great work, and we really appreciate your efforts going forward.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have five minutes before we have our posted executive session.
Okay.
So we are, what's the word we can, can jam?
I can arrange your question.
We can recess, that's the word I was looking for. So I'm going to recess for the next five minutes, and then we will move into executive session.
Are we coming back here?
Yeah. We'll have it.
Okay.
All those in favor? In executive session, the school committee received advice about the superintendent search, no votes were taken.
So we have already had the pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone signed up for open forum? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Actually, before that, can I ask for a motion to table item four, pending discussion later in this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
No.
All those in favor? Have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I'm against. I'm voting against it. It's just something I never looked forward to.
Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Mr. Rurick?
Yes, resignations, JV softball coach, Tiverton High School, Raquel Andrews; appointments, Director of Technology, David Carnavale; library media aide at all three of our elementary schools, Linda Ekstrom. And the correspondence was the letter that I sent to the Budget Committee concerning the actions that the committee took at their last meeting regarding the budget.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we are on item seven, policy development revision, first reading, open forum policy number 735. So this is the first reading, we don't need a motion, any discussion?
Just a little, yeah, sure. Just a little bit of background on the open forum policy. We went back, took a look at it, we tightened it up a little bit, making our parameters a little bit more clear than what they were in the past. Specifically, we're asking that there be no solicitations during the open forum.
Excuse me.
That the topics that are appropriate for the open forum portion of our meeting are to be only items that are not listed on the current agenda, and specifically that we typically leave opportunities for people to comment on agenda items as we go through those discussions. So we'd like to reserve the open forum where we really can't engage in conversation. We want to limit the open forum to topics that are not on the current agenda. And then we also, we're looking to allot for open forum a maximum of 30 minutes.
Total.
This way, total.
That's total.
Total. Right. There was already an individual limitation of three minutes, but we, you know, as is typical with a meeting, we have a number of items on the agenda, and it really doesn't make for a good use of time once we go beyond 30 minutes for one item.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other discussion?
This, just so everyone knows, this was reviewed by our attorneys, and they approved the proposed language that we're putting forward.
So I just have one comment or suggestion, and I don't know if there's any appetite on the rest of the committee for this. My feeling is that you should have appropriate standing to address an open forum, so I'm certainly happy to hear from any citizen of Tiverton, any student of the school district, or any staff member, but I'm not sure that that's a venue that we want to create for outside groups, because they may not necessarily be soliciting, but they may be here to express an opinion about something we're doing or something that's happening nationally or...
But they can do that during our regular agenda as well. We don't limit that. It's an open meeting, meaning it's open to the public, and anybody that's in the public can come and comment. So because our regular agenda is open to anyone, I don't know that I could limit the open forum any more so than we would our regular agenda.
Well, I would say the issue there is that the open forum is unrestricted in terms of the topic, and we are restricted in terms of the response, whereas the posted agenda has to do with things that we are taking up as a committee because we think they need to be taken up, and we are able to respond to things that people are saying. So I think there is a qualitative dis...
I'm not even sure that would be illegal. It's a public meeting.
I believe, I mean, it's something we're not, would have to check with Attorney Robinson, but I agree with Mrs. Paul.
There'd be a free speech thing?
It's an open meeting, and you allow people to speak. I mean, he could...
Wouldn't it likely restrict solicitation?
I didn't go to law school, can't answer the question. I don't know. I just know that we can do that. We can ask the attorney if that's what the committee would like, for an opinion.
Well, obviously, if there's not any, if I'm a, you know, a minority of one, then the issue...
I don't think we've had it. I don't think if it becomes an issue, we can certainly readdress it, but we haven't, we've had, what, four people speak?
You can always go back and, like, you can always go back and modify the policy if it becomes an issue.
For-speak period or for-speak?
Since we've started the open forum, we've had very few people come and speak, so...
No, but we've had outside groups from other towns come with a political agenda that I found was inappropriate for our school committee meeting.
Well, they may at times be uncomfortable, but we do have our time limitations on there built in.
We could say that it needs to, we could say that it needs to be something within our care and control, so if you're going to come and just talk about what's going on in South Carolina, we can say that's out of order, because it's, I mean, we have no, you know...
But it's not out of order.
It's a school committee agenda, so if it's something that's within our care and control, I don't know.
Not the agenda, open forum.
Maybe we could ask the attorney for some guidance here, because I do worry that you get into a free speech issue.
And, you know, I'm thinking back, I've watched a number of the financial town meetings from back in the day, and I think it was common practice that anyone was allowed in into the room until it was time to vote. That people would give an army, ones for voting, etc.
At one point, yeah, at one point, at some point, at different times, they separated you.
Mm-hmm.
You had to go into a non-resident area to watch it on short circuit.
But a financial town meeting is different than the open...
But it's still...
I'm talking about our policy and our meeting, so, anyway.
And with regard to the solicitations, I think it was our intent to funnel any solicitation opportunities directly to the administration prior to them getting to this committee.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not saying that I'm in favor of putting...
But there's nothing to stop them from coming up front, is what you're saying, and doing a three-minute solicitation.
Well, what I'm, no, I'm saying the policy actually does say you can't solicit, and I guess it's...
And so your question is, how is that not going to be free speech?
You know, up to me to interpret if that's... So, right, exactly. And free speech is not, you know, you cannot fire in a crowded theater.
Right.
It is not unrestricted.
Right.
So, given the fact that this committee is enjoined from speaking, and there is no restriction on the topic, other than solicitation, litigation personnel, and, you know, we're restricting...
Well, things that basically need to be in executive...
We're restricting vulgarity. So vulgarity is actually a protected speech as well.
Right.
Regardless of, you know, whether or not it's appropriate. So I think we should ask for an opinion from the attorney, and I don't know, Elaine or Sally, do you have any opinion about this at all, or want to back me up?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you. I'm used to that.
No opinion or no?
No opinion or no, you don't want to back him up?
I'm taking him as free speech away.
Yeah, I'm taking him as free speech away. All right, well, I would like to hear from the attorney if we can do that, even if we can, even if we don't have the votes.
What's the specific question?
So whether or not we can...
How much we can limit our open forum?
Limit the capacity to speak in open forum to citizens, students, staff members of the...
Or outsiders.
Or residents of Tiverton, yeah.
Well, I'm establishing standing. I'm not excluding any particular group, other than by saying, you have to either be a citizen of Tiverton, you have to be a student of the district, or you have to be an employee of the district. I think that's pretty broad.
No, but what if you're from Massachusetts and you're a grandparent? You're not from Tiverton, you're not, but you're a grandparent, your kids, your grandkids go here. I can just see all kinds of...
Okay, so that's why this is a good discussion.
Right. I can see all kinds of people from the outside that might want to come and speak with us at our open forum.
Yeah? Okay. And maybe that's it, you need to establish some relationship to the district.
That's what I'm thinking, is can we limit it in some way to things that are under our care and control? It's a pretty broad topic, but, like, if you come and you're trying to sell us, you know, cars, that has nothing to do with running the Tiverton...
know, cars, that has nothing to do with running the Tiverton School District. So it's not relevant to us.
I, we can ask the question, but I think, I mean, just, we have been told so many times that we can't speak.
Yeah, I know.
At different meetings.
Can't limit...
Um...
Open means open.
No, but we can't speak because we're not, it's not posted on the agenda.
Right, that's right.
No, but, no, I know, I don't mean that. I mean, we have been, I just think...
So we don't have to have open forum. There is no requirement.
No, we do not, but we chose to, so...
So, you know, I think that if it's something within our power to convey to the, to the public, it's probably within our power to restrict it in a way that we think is appropriate to the business of this committee.
Let's ask Stephen how much we can...
And I'll tell you right now that my opinion is that we shouldn't restrict it in that regard.
Okay. I kind of knew that. All right. Any other, any other discussion on that policy? All right. So, Policy Development Revision, Recruitment, Advertisement and Hiring Policy and Practices for Tiverton School District Administration and Faculty, Policy Number 981. So, I don't know if you want to gloss this for us, Mrs. Palace, or Mrs. Farnworth, or Mr. Ririck?
So the first thing that will stand out is that we have whittled this down to a policy pertaining only to teachers and certified support professionals. We, as you will see in the next two items, is that we've developed additional policies to speak to the hiring policies and practices for other groups. With this policy in particular, I think the biggest thing that stands out is we've struck a good portion of it. It was way too long, and a lot of it was actually more procedural than policy, and honestly, in conflict with probably many years of hiring. We have specified the use of, and adjusted the use of screening committees for number three on that policy. And I'll let you all read through the individual components of it. Again, a lot of this is, we've struck out a lot of the language that was just not necessary. I'm guessing that this policy will be far less than the current seven pages once we get finished with it.
Okay, thank you.
And the big point really was trying to, I don't even know if I know, was trying to...
You want to know?
Was trying to split them up between a policy for administrators and faculty versus a policy for, well, so what do we have? We have the district...
Teachers, administrators, and then non-certified.
And then non-certified, yeah. Really, the goal was to try to split those three up, because we felt like the school committee for sure should have more of a role with definitely principals. So you'll see that, there's more of a role there.
Yeah, so I think I actually was wanting to refer these policies to you guys, and it was because there were a lot of inconsistencies and contradictions in the policy. So I appreciate your work doing this, and I think it looks pretty good. Any other comment from anybody? This is just the first reading, so we'll take them up again at our...
Thank you, thank you for that review.
At our next meeting. Okay, so I'm going to move on then to Interview Process and Procedures for Selection of Principals and Other Administrators Policy Number 993. Anyone have any comments or questions about that policy? And then Interview Process and Procedures for Selection of Non Teaching Personnel Policy Number 994. Any concerns, questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Yeah, look them over, and we'll see what you think, Paul.
So we are on to old business, Revised 2018-2019 Budget. Mr. Ririck?
Yes, in your packet, you have the three-page summary, the item-by-object budget summary, which represents the newest, or not newest, our number that we voted to put forward, the $30,323,368. And then we also broke down for you, just in a, not a spreadsheet, but in this chart, you can see the FY '19 dollar increase, our calculations. Tonight, I would ask the committee to officially vote to take the $459,391 out of the fund balance, so that we can put it towards our operational expenses for next year. And you can see the $459,391 there. As we talked about our last meeting, in the last chart you have is a up-to-date, or an updated adjusted fund balance worksheet.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I'll just mention that I went before the Budget Committee last Thursday and presented our budget in vivo, as well as the correspondence we sent to the Budget Committee. Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 8B, Charter Review Commission Update. Mrs. Black?
Yes, I attended the meeting last night, and they're still going through their different proposals. They had quite a few new ones last night that I'd rather not talk about.
New ones last night? I thought they were close to new...
No, they had some new ones, but, so as I said, I'll get the latest ones out to you when, if they vote them up or down, and we'll keep up with that.
So someone had asked me that question, Sally. I thought they had said they were going to stop taking them out in December.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
What happens now is if someone drinks one, one of the commissioners can sponsor it.
Oh, so, oh.
You know what I mean?
All right. So they're not automatically taking them, but you have an idea that one of the commissioners likes, they will go ahead and put it forward?
Yeah, the commissioner, yeah.
Okay. Because someone did ask me if they could still propose.
Yeah, one of the nine people, one of the commissioners, one of the commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
One of them last night, they talked about was taking our stipends away, so, you know, whatever, they just talked about that. And they also talked about not calling fire department and police departments departments, just saying they were going to provide services, because that gives you more flexibility.
What?
The fire services and the, okay.
Yes, yes.
That's almost Orwellian.
They talked about...
Actually, it is Orwellian.
Well, they talked about technology and how you won't meet as many people, and sometimes you can use phones, so I said, but we have, also have rescues.
To put out a fire?
Phone going to come save someone that had a heart attack. And also the police department, they thought the state police could take over, and I said, no. I said, yeah, so those are the different things they're talking about now, so we'll see what happens.
Do we know when there's going to be done, and we can look at what's going...
No, they're going to have another public hearing soon.
Isn't the closest state police barracks, like in Portsmouth or something?
In Lincoln, no, Portsmouth is closed.
I think Portsmouth is supposed to be reopening...
But it's closed right now.
Right now, it is, yeah.
Yeah, Lincoln.
Maybe they're reopening it.
But anyway, this state laws about how many policemen you need per population and all those different things.
Since we tried that, we're told no.
So we're still a few months away from getting final recommendations?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're still going through the process.
Okay.
And if they vote on any, we'll bring you the copies, so you can keep up with it. It's all online also. They do do a good job with that.
Of keeping it online?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, their commission ends...
July.
In July, right?
July 17th, I think.
So this will come to a conclusion, one way or another.
And I asked them to please check with legal on both sides of school and the town, you know, just to see if they're just outright illegal.
Their commission ends.
Waste time and money, you know? So I asked them if they were going to try to do that. That would be good.
So they have to actually, can they continue to...
No.
Do things after the July 17th?
They're no longer right and powered, I guess, by the election? Nope.
Interesting. All right. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you, Sally.
For that unbelievable service of going to those meetings. All right. We are to item 9A, School Departments Budget Procedures, Recent Auditors' Comments. So as I think most of the members of the committee know, there was a meeting of the Budget Committee on March 1st that was, Ms. Sahady from the auditor, well, from the firm that did the audit, presented to the Budget Committee, not as the auditor, but as a consultant, and discussed, really, the school committee's budget and our financing, in particular, the fund reserve, which came as a surprise, I know, to me and probably to most of you as well. When I met with them last week, I tried to correct some of the misperceptions, I think, that were created by that presentation. I'm not sure how much light I was able to shed all the same, but they have, we have, I've extended to them an opportunity to, or an invitation to meet with them, you know, in full session with our committee and their committee, and Mr. Ririck, and our business manager, to sort of try and understand that a lot a bit more on their part. I don't know if anybody's watched the tape, or had any comments, or questions, or discussions about what happened last week, or in general.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I am on, I think. Am I on?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I'm not going to comment. I'm going to really, I want to focus on, if I can, her comments, because as a CPA, I've been in public accounting for 20 of my 30 years. I was dismayed at the lack of due diligence a partner in this firm took before she went and presented before that body. There were a lot of, not only inaccurate, but just flat-out false statements that were made. I was really, really disappointed that there wasn't even a minimum standard of care. It was like, you know, she threw some numbers on a piece of paper and came before them, and she did say over and over and over again, it wasn't material, it wasn't material, but the statements were so alarming and so inflammatory that I just feel like, you know, they need to be addressed. One of the big things she focused on, and I have handouts, because I want, I want everybody on this committee to understand this. She spoke a lot about the variances...
Thank you.
...that were in the audit, in the back of the audit, in the supplemental information.
I'm going to wait until you get back to your bike.
She spoke a lot about the variances and went on for probably a good 20 minutes. So I think it's really important that we understand what she was talking about. So if you look at this top box, I, for purposes of this, I just put down three lines. When we do our budget, we do salaries, benefits, and purchase services. Purchase services for us is SED, Special Education. So when we originally do our budget, when the numbers come in, we sort of throw everything into purchase services, which can be non-salried items as well as salried items. Because when we're doing the budget in March, we don't know how much is salary yet. So we sort of throw it all in there. So for instance, it could be $250,000 worth of SED salaries. Well, once we have that information, we can then properly classify SED salaries up to the salary line. The reason that's important is because RIDE says, when you report salaries, I want your SED salaries up there. They used to not care, but now they care, because they said, we want to be able to compare your district with, with other districts. So they care. So what I showed you was essentially a revised budget. And then I gave you, these are all just numbers I threw out there. Then I showed you actuals. So if you go down and you look at this first box, it says Audit 2014, 2015, 2017, this is what the auditors were showing. The original budget that did not have the salaries up in that line versus actuals that have that salary, have those salaries in that line. And you can see what it does. It looks like, whoa, you guys don't know how to budget, when in reality, what they should have been showing was what you see on the right. Revised budget versus actual versus variance. And in fact, the auditors actually showed it that way in 2016. So Mary Sahady had this, and she's like, I just don't understand. Look at all these variances. And all of a sudden, it goes away in 2016. It went away in 2016 because Doug Fiori, our prior business manager, at our request, said, this representation is so unfair. It's not a true picture. You need to show it this way. And they said, yes, you're right, we do. So they fixed it in 16, and for whatever reason, went back to the old way in 17, maybe because there was transition between, you know, you know, Ms. Farr and Mr. Fiori. I don't know. But the fact remains that this was such a simple answer to why these variances look like that, and why 16 was unusual. A cursory, cursory glance at their own work papers would have answered that for her. And I'm so disappointed and upset that someone else that is, belongs to my profession, didn't do just a minimum of work, and came in and made it seem like we didn't know what we were doing. And I mean, this discussion went on for probably more than 20 minutes, just about these, about something that had such a simple, it's math, simple, simple explanation. I, in fact, went back, I have an email from the Director of Finance in 2015, because I asked this very question. Why do these variances keep showing up? And he forwarded me an email that he sent to Ken Connors from Hague Sahady, that he explained why these variances kept coming, you know, why? Because it's not apples and apples. And they acknowledged, oh, yeah, no, okay, it's fine. Which is why, when they gave their opinion to us, that Bill handed out, it said, the audit was fine, clear, unqualified opinion. They even thanked our, everyone in our department at the beginning, you know, to say. So that, that was one thing. I was just, I don't understand. I don't understand how she couldn't have just performed a minimum of due diligence, even a two-minute conversation with her fellow auditor, would have explained these alarming variances that she went on for, like, at least 20 minutes. Unfortunately, I think, guys, that's what happens when you're talking about us and not to us. That's really the unfortunate part, that we could have answered that almost immediately. The second thing that she sort of focused on at great length was the IDA grant drawdown. And I'm, I know we have carried forward grants before, because we, if you think in the next year you might have a spike, you want to carry that forward. It's not unlike our health insurance rebates that we have, that we hang out there. So in her discussion with them, and again, this is where, you know, what I find upsetting, she made it sound like that was something you couldn't do, you couldn't carry it forward, that we missed something. However, I didn't have the conversations with them, so I'm going to let Ms. Farr, who did talk to them, speak about that.
So there is a carryforward that is allowed, and we had that discussion, and we actually had a phone call with RIDE, who said, oh, at this point, it would probably be in your guys' best interest to take the drawdown. And that's actually what we did. And it was totally within the regulations of what we were supposed to and allowed to do. And so the bigger concern was whether or not it was going to be too late in the audit, but they're allowed to, they allowed us to leave the books open to make this adjustment. And so everything was done perfectly above board.
So this was something RIDE found?
Yes. RIDE found it.
And I'd also like to point out that the auditors didn't bring it to our, what you just mentioned, RIDE did. That's what held up the audit at the state level. RIDE, no... RIDE asked us about the money and we had the conversations with them and then we brought the money over. But the auditors themselves-
Which, again, is exactly the opposite of what Sahady said this week.
Made no mention of it. And, and I know Mrs. Black referenced a conversation regarding the charter commission and how everything can be done by phones. This audit was done by just data transfers. Nobody came on site. There were conversations. We did talk with the auditors while it was going on, but no one ever came back to us and, and said there was an issue. As you can see with the summary letter that was sent to the town that we provided to you tonight, the audit was fine. There was no issues with the audit either on the town's side or our side. So for the owner of that accounting firm to make those assertions, again, I'm not a professional accountant, but just from an ethical standpoint, their own firm gave us a clean bill of health and yet she went before the Budget Committee and criticized our accounting practices, which her own firm found were fine.
Okay. So, so for the drawdown, pretty much RIDE said, "Hey, we don't know if this money's going to be there. If you carry it forward, you might want to take it."
That's correct.
And we said, "Okay."
Correct.
So it certainly wasn't what she made it seem.
Can I just make a few points here, though? So to something that sort of you've all said, one of the things that concerned me was that this was, the IDEA drawdown was, is money that is essentially a contingency fund, as I understand it, for special education.
Kind of, it can.
And I am and I was and I remain uncomfortable that we are taking that money and putting it in the fund balance because that takes it away from being a contingency fund to then being money that it looks like we have sitting in the bank.
We, right, but-
No, I know we can restrict it.
But we have, but we had to.
There's a clarification to be made there, though. I think that's important.
But we had to bring it over, otherwise we would have lost it.
No, and I understand that.
No, no, for just for clarification, the expenses that were taken against it are specifically for IDEA.
Okay.
It's whether or not we choose to draw down off of it at that time.
Okay, all right.
So it is specific expenses for those line items.
All right.
Which we budgeted and-
Then, then the other thing that I found troubling in that presentation, among others, was that she made these assertions and essentially what were accusations as well as, you know, some innuendo disparaging our administration, while at the same time as the auditor, the named partner in that same firm, saying, "Well, I don't have access to all of the books." And that, again, I'm not a-
Yes, you do.
...but I don't understand how those two statements are consistent.
They don't.
They were communicating only specifically with our accountants via email.
And they may not make themselves-
No, every year prior to this, they have come onsite to do an audit. And so for whatever reason this year, they did not show up and all communication was via email.
Right. Choosing not to exercise that access is not the same thing as not having the access.
That's correct. They had complete access to everything.
Yep.
Right. Well, that's what I thought-
And after review, again, after reviewing our data, there were no questions. There were no inquiries beyond basic questions. And again, you see from the letter, the audit was, was fine with our, with our practices.
So, and so I guess I'll get to the other two sort of logical inconsistencies that I find. One is that, you know, if she's, her firm is willing to give us, give the town a clean audit, but then comes in and says, "Well, all these things are, you know, problematic at the least," that to my mind calls into question the validity of the, the audit itself. And then finally is the fact that what these things are getting at, or what, what she was getting at in the presentation, and which is why I think she was careful to describe herself as a consultant. I don't know if the Budget Committee or the town was paying her as a consultant. I would like to know that, but I don't know if they have actually allocated money to, to do so. But it's really getting at policy and that is not the business of an auditor. It is the business of this committee to set policy. We do three things. Hire a superintendent, we set policy, and we set a budget. So I really found it very inappropriate that she was getting into those questions and those issues, again, without ever asking anyone on this committee, certainly not me, and I don't believe the administration about these issues.
Well, especially when your, your, your whole jumping off point was incorrect information.
And, and just, I don't know if I'm, we also, after we found, after we heard the, the presentation, we reached out to the firm, the auditing firm, to see if we could adjust the variances so that they would be, you know-
Consistent with-
Be consistent with 60. And they told us it was closed. But we did call, within a couple of days after that presentation, we called and said, "Well, can we adjust it? Because we'll adjust it." And they said we couldn't, that it was, it was a done deal.
Could I ask a question? Has any member of that firm asked to come before us or-
No, no.
Okay.
Do we know how she ended up there? That seemed to be a big question. Was she invited by the Budget Committee?
We were not, someone, all's I know is we weren't invited.
Oh, all right.
So that seems to be the more astonishing part, you know, in a way of the, you watched the tape. So the meeting was posted as a report from Hague Sahady about-
The audit.
The audit. And then she said, "Well, I'm here as a consultant and everyone on, sitting on, you know, there were 10 out of the 11 members of the committee seemed to have no idea that she was there as a consultant for them." Probably the meeting should have ended right there to, to follow open meetings laws, but it didn't. So I guess the answer is no. No one really seems to know how she got there. At least no one would sort of own it. There was another meeting March 8th, if you want to watch those tapes, and they are all not clear.
So again, you know, they can, certainly if it was properly posted, I don't have an issue with anyone going before them, but, you know, at least do some due diligence on the stuff that you're going to present. And again, you know, I think the bigger issue, you know, one of the bigger issues is people talking through us and around us and about us and, and not to us. I think, you know, that's really not a good way to govern. We're always happy to answer questions. Certainly always happy to clarify. Great discuss, you know, there's discussions to be had about fund balance, how big it should and how big it shouldn't be. And that's discussions we should have, but we have to have them together. This, this sort of gotcha really isn't, it's not helping one taxpayer, it's not helping one student, and that's unfortunate.
And we have, on an ongoing basis, in this committee and, you know, looking over the last several meetings, would have seen us taking votes, allocating funds, doing what we were supposed to do, which is figuring out what to do for the district and including what was going on with the fund balance. So it's, again, disappointing that it sort of became such an issue.
Dr. Larkin, you mentioned that you extended an invitation to meet with the Budget Committee.
Right.
I'm wondering if that invitation shouldn't also be extended to the Town Council. I think the, the very first night that the audit-
Yeah.
-was presented to them, a few members of the council immediately started focusing it on the, the school fund balance. And it was clear at that time that more discussion was going to be held. So, you know, if, if there is to be a meeting, let's get all of the elected bodies together, talk through this fund balance, talk to the reasons why this fund balance is what it is, and, and really what we're doing with this fund balance. You know, we've, we've had this incredible opportunity to make some upgrades to our facilities that have been neglected for decades. You know, it's like, okay, fine, great. We were the recipients of some, you know, some changes in special education costs primarily over the years that, that have allowed us to accumulate this balance. Okay, great, now let's use it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I-
Yeah, we could certainly-
That, that's doing our job.
Right.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
Yes, and as a member of the committee, you read the book, you read all of them, and they all say the same thing, we comply with everything, and so you don't worry. And then you, you hear something like that and then we're at the next meeting and they have the minutes and then they're going to make a motion to put something in those minutes that the school department did this and did that and took this money. And I said, "Excuse me, wait a minute." And I said the same thing that Mrs. Farnworth just said. I said, "I, this is a policy matter." I said, "Mrs. Polish had mentioned in 2011, '12' is when we started separating capital from operations, applying the request of the Budget Committee, and we'll have that whole talk and I'll have my charts at the next meeting. But we made a decision altogether for that and now we can review it, but I think it's true that we should all sit together and that's what I said. I said, "Why would you put something like that in the minutes? I think we should all get together, the, the Budget Committee, the Town Council, and the School Committee, and we'll show you everything we've done and the town will get the main business and we have the building standing, the building committee now on all these good things and it's a positive thing and we should be celebrating it instead of being embarrassed or saying, 'Oh, my God, we didn't call them.'" But, you know, it's like, we've tried to do a, a good job for the taxpayers and for the children and the, you know, the schools and I think it would be a good idea if we all got together and, and talked about it in a calm, reasonable manner instead of everybody pointing fingers.
And that was at the request that sort of, we would now start budgeting our own capital-
Right.
-needs? Was that the request of the Budget Committee in office at that time?
And if you look at the dockets, you'll see that's the year it changed.
Yeah, I have. That was one of my frustrations with her, too. At the end, they said, "Well, is that a high fund balance?" And she went, "Well, I haven't really looked at that, but I think it might be." What kind of answer is that? Like, without knowing-
Certainly not contextual.
Like, for instance, I think Middletown's fund balance is like, what, 14 million? Now it's huge.
Their town fund balance is very, much higher than Tiverton's.
But, but there's a reason for it.
That's correct.
They have that, they have that thing with Salvate, or not Roger Williams or Salvate that, or whatever that they're doing. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume to say it's way too high in an accusatory manner.
And they also have one of the highest moving ratings, by the way, so.
But my point being-
Because they manage their finance.
If you look at fund balances throughout, and I did this right after I watched the tape, they can go from 3 up to 12 percent. But are any of those towns being asked to manage for $25 million of capital needs?
Right, that's-
Those capital needs in most other towns come through the general fund, not in Tiverton's. So without knowing that, she made a very inflammatory statement without knowing why our fund balance may be what it is, so.
I think you are.
Like I said, my, my big issue with her is just as a professional, really didn't do a lot of due diligence before she made a lot of statements.
And I think it goes without saying that the town is, has financial issues that they're dealing with, but part of that problem is that their fund balance has been reduced over the past three or four years for, because they can go line item by line item and budgets get approved. And the question should be not, "Why was ours high?" The question should be, "Why is theirs so low?"
Three letters, FTR.
I, I know, but, but the point is, have that, whether it's with the three groups, but that's the real rub here in the community, is we have managed our money wisely and we've spent it on things that we've said we were going to spend it on. And we are responsible for all capital purchases and I think that conversation's long overdue at some point.
Yeah, it is. And, and we can't say it enough. Looked, we looked at our fund balance, we discussed this, all of us sitting here discussed the fund balance. We discussed the budget next year. We asked for $1. I don't know what else you want us to do. I mean, we're, we're trying to manage those capital needs and we're trying to also be cognizant of what we're asking for. So I, I just would really ask our elected officials to just try to meet with us instead of what we're getting.
I can certainly, I will follow up with the Budget Committee and extend the invitation as well to the Town Council to see if we can have a joint meeting and we can all sort of, you know?
That would be great.
We are, we are all in this together, one way or another.
Yeah.
So we might as well have the discussion together.
Gotcha makes adults feel good, but it doesn't help anybody.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments? All right. So we're up to Item 9B, budget history.
I said I'd do that next time, okay? I'll add another note.
Okay, we'll table that till next.
I'll have my charts.
Okay.
Here, I'll hand these out, though, as long as we have it and you can do it. We can talk about this next week, too.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure we stayed on the agenda for them, not for you to be upset.
Yep. All right, so I am-
Absolutely, we've had it on the agenda.
Item 9C, update on at-risk seniors.
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Ashley to give an update to the committee. Or his update.
Is this on?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. Yes, we are working closely and an update from my first letter, it is 23 students, not 19 right now. We've gone back and taken a closer look. But we have looking, working with these students, organized them into three tiers. The most at-risk, moderate risk, and lower risk. The most at-risk have the most absences in at least the teens to twenties or more and are struggling with multiple courses. The moderate at-risk still have significant absences and are not passing two courses and then are, you know, still concerning but, or categorizing as lower risk where don't have as many absences, still some, and may or may not be passing a course, but this might be a student that is close and so we want to engage them earlier rather than not so that we prevent any potential issues. So we really take a team approach with all of our students, but especially our at-risk seniors. And it starts in the beginning of the senior year with the counseling team, administration, and teachers engaging with the students and the families. And you'll hear me say the word engagement a few times because we believe that that is the key to achievement or having these students succeed and that from experience we have found that for a variety of reasons, they begin to lose engagement with the school. And we say that kind of broadly, that's, can show up in absences, it can show up where they still might be coming, but they're just kind of going through the motions. And so we start with parent meetings, phone calls in the fall, and first start that conversation to say, "We are concerned, you're at risk, these are the courses you have to pass, these are where you might have some flexibility. What supports do you need from us? How can, how can we make this work?" And then we maintain those conversations throughout the fall. And as we get into the late fall, we check in, especially as term one ends and we start term two, we check in on these students and we see how they're doing. And it depends. And with the, especially the most at-risk students, if we see either no progress or decline in progress, we immediately get them in for a parent meeting. And at that point, we're, you know, we're really trying to brainstorm, again, in terms of a team approach with the student and the parent guardian around, what, what else, what else do you need? What's, is there, what's the issue? And with, in terms of trying to identify the problem, that's often part of the task, is what exactly is, is, you know, the roadblock here for, for that student and the family? In the case of absences, sometimes it's access, sometimes it's routines, sometimes there might be a medical health situation that may or may not be identified. And so we really, we will work, our support team does a tremendous job of saying, "What do you need us to do? You know, how do you, how do we need to..." We'll have some students, we will call them every single day at 7:30 in the morning if we have to say, "Hey, it's, it's school time. Are you coming in?" You know? But other times, we have students that, you know, the absences are concerned, but they still, like I said, come, but they're just kind of going through the motions. The daily conversations with the teachers, the check-ins, the conversations at home, and we, we're kind of saying, you know, what, what, what's, what's missing here? And it's, it's a challenge. Sometimes it's a relationship issue with, you know, something at home, with another student, and we, again, that's where the support staff come in to say, you know, where, where can we step in, step in to help you? You know, as we progress through the winter and into the spring semester, we- winter and into the spring semester, we, we maintain the contact, especially this time of year, bring the parents back in. And what we always tell the parents is that we don't give up. We will continue to work with you and your child until, in some cases, days before graduation if we have to. And this is where, especially as we get to this time of year, we, as a support team, sometimes if a parent or the guardian is struggling at home, we try to reach out to other organizations or supports in the community to say, you know, if there's something else that we can help you with. And in some cases, it is that this time of year especially, the students start to see that this is real, you know, we're not just saying this because we're adults, that this has a real impact. And we have seen some progress with those students where they start coming, and we can even get them to stay after school for even 15 or 20 minutes. You know, but it's a challenge that we work at. And this is where, I know we've had, you know, quite a few recent conversations at this level about the role of support staff and really a kind of a community-based approach to supporting students, and where it's helpful to reach out to those other supports. For example, the recent addition of our increase in our social worker is one good example where she has played a tremendous role as another asset for especially these students. And so we are, we're continuing to work with them. We have seen, you know, as of this week, we've seen some of these students, we're seeing some progress, we're really happy. They're coming to school, they're more engaged. I can't say that unfortunately for all of the students on the list, though. Again, we don't give up and continue to work with them throughout the year.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Any questions?
Can I just ask one?
Please.
These seniors that are at risk this year, were they also at risk for not passing 11th grade, or is this something new for these students?
It's a mix. Some were, and I don't know the exact number, some were definitely a concern last year and the year before. And that, that's how we know sometimes, even in September, because they will come in. Students typically coming into their senior year are at a certain credit level for their overall courses, where they're kind of comfortable, they have options for electives. We know with some of these students, they are what we call tight. They have to take a certain number of courses just to meet the bare minimum. That is certainly a number of students. But we do have a, not as many, a few students unless it's where challenges have been presented this year where they've, they've come up, come up to our watch.
Mrs. Black, any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, maybe. Thank you.
Ms. Polish?
Thank you.
So I appreciate your continuing to work with them, and I'm glad that you said you never give up. That's-
Yeah, we really-
That's what we wanted to hear. Last year, we, the School Committee was asked to make some additional resources available. Are there things that we need, that we can perhaps provide you more than you've already got?
If, if you're asking me for my wish-
As I was asking the question, I was wondering why I was asking the question, but-
I'm happy to entertain that.
You're a questioner.
I don't know how much detail you want me to go in, but, but yes, we would certainly ask, ask for more. You know, again, there's always, any given day, our, our council's support team teachers work with the kind of, the day-to-day struggles of teenage life, and whatever might happen that are presented that we can anticipate. But then we have these known students that we're working with at a broader, longer-term level, and this is definitely where our support team struggles, because they might have a plan in place for the day of, okay, I know I'm going to meet with this parent and with these students because they've been on my list and I need to, it's been a week since I've checked in, and then a particular crisis situation comes in. So certainly, a five-day-a-week psychologist, you know, the full-time, the four, you know, but, you know, those types of things, that's, having that, and I mentioned the social worker because that additional support has given us the flexibility almost every day, certainly weekly, where when the more immediate crisis comes up, we have somebody to respond, and then we still have now people to say, all right, well, let's work as a team. This person's going to work with this student's family, and, oh, you are going to meet with this family, let me take that for you, and let me work with that student, and then we can debrief afterwards. Whereas, you know, before, when you don't have that, you don't even have that option. You just have to deal with the more immediate.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the audience of three? Mrs. Borjes, there you are.
I'm not going to say anything. I'll just say one bit.
I, we do appreciate your being here, so thank you. And I know that you do a lot of the work with these students, so thank you.
Thank you. Just one brief thing. Mr. Ashley is correct. We might have our day perfectly planned, and one thing can occupy three hours. And when we have these crises, we don't take it on as a singular. So we have to, we have our crisis team. So if it was a crisis with one of my students, I'm immediately calling our social worker or our school psychologist. So now that our social worker's here, because sometimes we've had to call other schools and say, you need to send Celeste, or Edith, or Pam over, because we like to do it as a team. So our whole day is actually, right, ruined. So that's why we like these extra supports. And, you know, not for nothing, but me being there three days, you know, it does hinder a lot of stuff. I don't see my kids as much as I should, because today we were doing scheduling, then there's SAT coming up. So, yeah, we could use all the resources you want to send. If you want a list, I will sit with Mr. Ashley, and we will come up with one. But it is true, like, one student having an issue, which may seem minor to other people, is major to them and major to us, and we don't do it alone. We want to meet with these kids as a team, so we're making the right decisions for them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So maybe I should clarify, that was not an invitation to find ways to spend money. We all can do that.
Understood.
The more, if there were modest things that might help a given student, like some tutoring or something like that, please bring it to Mr. Eric or Ms. Lee Roach.
Yeah, and we are always trying to think creatively about either no-cost or very-low-cost options where-
If tutoring is an issue that Chris comes to us with, we can work something out, I'm sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And apparently, people don't like us saving money, so.
Yeah. All right. Item 9D, Recommendations to Emend Section 1218 of the Town Charter.
Yes, this, this item, I believe, came up at our last meeting, when Mrs. Black mentioned that the charter, one of the meetings, they, this issue, this number, this topic came up regarding, you know, if we wanted to make changes, and I know 1218 is an issue for, or has been a standing issue for this committee and previous committees, so I asked our attorneys if the committee is so inclined. This is what they recommend, and you have, see it there in red, that that's some recommendations that Attorney Payman Robinson gave us.
So, so that one's pending, they're waiting for the language. So if you want to send that language over to them.
So we probably need a motion to do so.
That's what they're waiting for.
Yeah. So, at least for purposes of discussion, can I have a motion to send the attorney's recommended changes to Section 1218 to the charter?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
It was ironic, because they were talking about it last night again at the charter review, because that's one of the ones we put in. And somebody behind me asked me about the budget. I said, I can't talk about it, I'm in the town hall. That just, because we're not supposed to use town resources to talk about the budget. So that was kind of our timing, as to what kind of problems that causes us all through these years.
So basically, what this does is specifies what is actually allowable as a elected official or employee of the town, is my sort of reading of this. Does anyone else have any other comments? And I think it sort of protects our rights as citizens. So. Ms. Farnworth?
I don't have any issue with the language. I do think that this is not something that the School Committee should be submitting, that the Town Council would have been the more appropriate body to put work into this as really the lead body in town. Again, I don't have any issue with the wording.
I did. Yeah. I think it-
And as a body, I just don't know if it really falls under our area of responsibility to be making this charter recommendation.
Well, that's one of the ones we sent forward.
Yeah, we were asked specifically, or invited specifically, to submit things to them for consideration, and this was one of the things we had come up with, and they said, well, okay, you say you want this section changed, tell us how. So this is actually a response to a request on the part of the Charter Review Commission.
It's already in this, they, you know.
Yeah. So, any other discussion? So all those in favor in sending it over to the Charter Review Commission? Opposed?
No.
In favor? This is in favor. Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, opposed. All right. So, let's see, was I the only one? All right. So four to one. Thank you. Item 9D, Request to Accept Safety Enhancement Grant?
Yes, we received a $1,000 grant from the trust for a smart saw stop, which goes on our table saws. I know Mrs. Black and Mrs. Farnworth saw them when we did our tour. We highlighted them as part of our-
Quite exciting.
Table saws as part of the, it's one of the highlights of the tour, just looking at, at how the saw would drop down underneath the table. And we also purchased a second one for our second table saw out of our funds.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Item 9F, Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Black?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Health and Safety.
Health and Wellness.
Oh, yeah, Health and Wellness, okay. So we had our meeting tonight, our Health and Wellness meeting, and some students came, so I was very happy. And we talked about our visits, our food advisory visits, and Chalk Wells was here to give her, her rundown. And it was a good meeting. Pat Curran came, and she's had children and grandchildren in the schools, and so was, of course, Elaine and I. So it was some nice conversation, and I hope more students come next time, because their input's very valuable. But it was a very good meeting. We'll have another one soon.
Okay, great.
Because we have to, by the state law.
Okay. Thank you. Item 9G, Approved Request to Seek Bids to Replace Fire Doors at THS and Front Doors at the Administration Building?
Yes, the, I'm asking the School Committee to give us permission to go out to bid to replace the interior fire doors here at the high school, and also the exterior doors leading it to the central office.
Can I have a motion to that effect?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9H, Posting of Minutes on the School Committee Minutes Format. Mrs. Farnworth?
Thank you for that multiple, Dr. Locken. I think I'm going to be a little bit of a troublemaker tonight.
Getting better at it.
When I was looking for a package, I noticed that we had two sets of minutes from our last meeting, and one of them was regular session, one was executive session, and I called Mr. Eric and asked him, why are we doing it separate? Everything I've seen in the past was, you know, that the minutes for the open session, executive session, are done together. And he mentioned that it was the School Committee's policy to put it separate, that that's been a longstanding approach.
Practice, right.
Practice, not policy, practice, thank you.
Otherwise, we'd have to write one.
So, you know, I went and did a little bit of Googling, and found within 30 minutes' time, four examples, five examples of districts locally within the last three to four months, that they all published their executive session minutes together with the open session minutes as one portion of the minutes.
As does the council.
As does the council, as does everybody that I could find at the Secretary of State's website. So I, you know, I'd like to propose that we start to put our minutes together. It just, to me, it's just efficient, it's all in one place, you can follow it. It's in keeping with pretty much what everyone else is doing, so I can't imagine that we're the only right ones.
Imagine, imagine. It was always my understanding that the public wasn't privy to executive session minutes, that those were, I know they're not always sealed.
Only if they're not, only if they're sealed. If they're sealed, they're not, otherwise they're just-
The public's-
Yeah, and then you'll see, they voted to seal the minutes.
Right.
There's not much in there, but.
Well, that's, yeah, that's usually just what I report out.
It's reported out in votes, but they're definitely public unless we seal them.
And they don't require separate filing. And one thing I learned, too, from doing this research, is that we could probably throw a little bit more substance into our minutes. It was quite the read with some of them. I mean, it is the gamut from, you know, the bullets to cover the topics that were discussed, to really almost verbatim of what happened in specific meetings. And, you know, I found that ours were probably the skinniest out there.
That's by design on the recommendation of our attorney.
Again, if we're the only ones doing it this way, it doesn't merit consideration.
I thought the reason why the minutes are the way they are is because there's always the tape as the backup.
Sometimes the tape's not there. I think our last meeting never got put on YouTube.
I think it's supposed to, you know, the minutes are the, you know, the business that was done, and Stephen has always told us less is more.
Well, I would ask, you know, people to just take a look at what other communities are doing. I think that we may be doing the citizens of Tiverton a disservice by not having the amount of information included in there that perhaps we should.
I don't know if it was Mr. Arati, I think he just said tonight that somewhere, some town, whatever, it doesn't matter where it was, they do verbatim minutes for something. But that's all that person does. That's that person's job, is minutes, meeting minutes, and that-
In their full-time job, 2,000 hours in a year?
Maybe 20, I don't know. He just happened to mention it when he was-
I don't know how these other communities are doing it, then.
I don't know.
Barrington, Bristol Warren, Portsmouth, Middletown. So it's just, you know, it was of, no, it wasn't what I was out there looking for.
No, it was what you found.
Yeah, it is.
What you discovered.
And I'm, you know, I'm wondering if we're not-
So isn't the arbiter of all of this either the Secretary of the State, Secretary of State, or the Attorney General?
Yeah, we're definitely meeting the requirements. What Diane is saying is, do we want to do more?
Should we do more?
Or should we do more? And, and like I said, Stephen has been, the eight years I've been here, of the opinion that less is more.
And in the event that a video is, for some reason, not available, which can happen.
Well, there's a tape.
No, not always.
Do we do a tape anymore?
What does that?
We always do.
David, does that tape?
We still do a tape. We do, we do a tape.
It's not readily available, though, whereas the minutes are posted on the website.
They're readily available by, again, on the statute, it's by request, and we provide it.
I just, I would like us to be more transparent, as transparent as possible. It's really the bottom line here.
I'm not sure that I would characterize what we're doing as not being transparent.
No, but I think that it can send a message that we're, perhaps we're not, even though we are fully transparent with everything we do. It's just not being put on the minutes where other communities are.
Diane?
Yes.
May I ask, may I ask you a question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Were the School Committee minutes only that you looked at, or did you look at other?
Yes. No, I only looked at School Committee minutes.
Okay, okay.
I know with the Tiverton Town Council posts, I didn't go into other town councils.
I mean, I just think it's more work for Carolyn, and I'm just not sure it's necessary. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I would tend to agree, and I guess I would, it's a bit amorphous to sort of just say the minutes should be more complete, or they should include more things. I guess I'd have to know more what you're looking for from the minutes.
I also learned about some of the business that's being conducted in some of these other towns.
Okay.
You know, they were very informative.
Which you could have done by looking at their tapes.
Lot faster to read two pages of minutes.
Okay.
But then you-
Okay.
But then you get into, like you have at the Budget Committee routinely, where they're arguing over what they should and shouldn't say.
Oh, and I'm not recommending, oh, all right, no, I wouldn't recommend that, you know, for example, you know, well, Mrs. Farnworth said this, and then Mrs. Pavo said that, and not necessarily looking for that level of granularity, but perhaps more than what we're providing today, is what I was thinking.
I guess I would ask you to give us a more specific, and, you know, it doesn't have to be tonight, but-
An example of what you thought was a nice compromise?
I can do that.
And then maybe we can sort of say, you know-
And I'm sorry, Carolyn, if you-
That's too much, that's too-
She's sitting there wrong.
That's right. So, you know, I'll, you know, whenever you want to put this back on the agenda, why don't we take it up again, you know, with a more specific idea of what you're looking for?
Sure, I'll come up with maybe some samples.
So, I know, I think I'm thinking-
Yeah, maybe I'm thinking something very different than what you're looking at.
Yeah, I'll try and come up with some samples of what I think is good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Where?
Homeschool request.
All right. Item 9I, homeschool request, Ranger School.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, item number 10, announcements.
Next meeting.
Yes, so, actually, I was going to ask that we include on our agendas in the future just meeting scheduling as a standing thing, but our next meeting currently is scheduled for-
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, and we're going to have spotlight out success.
Yes. School calendar, 18-19 calendar, and we've got several items in executive session.
So we're meeting at seven?
I would recommend that we, if the committee could, meet at six, to do the executive session, and then come out, because we'll be talking about security upgrades that we discussed, and I would also then be looking for a vote.
Right.
In open session to proceed.
And will Chief Jones and Officer Black be there? Okay.
So can everybody make six?
I, they're coming, I didn't, I didn't give them a date, because I didn't know if it was going to be next Tuesday or not.
All right.
They know it's next week.
All right, so, yeah, I can make six, can you make six, Sally and Elaine? Six, six, six.
Next Tuesday.
So are there other agenda items in open session that we need to discuss?
Those-
I mean, we're kind of-
Those were the ones, the calendar.
Well, I don't know if it would be appropriate for this meeting, or perhaps the following, I don't know where we are with the before-school care proposals and research.
We wouldn't be ready for the 27th, I know that.
Okay.
All right.
I'd just like to give a small thing on the Rhode Island Association of School Committees that we attended Saturday, it'll just be like five minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other items for next week? Mrs. Pulak?
Just a reminder that we need, Mr. Eric, you need to speak about the change in the-
I saw you come up, another item that came up at today's construction meeting, I'm going to ask, we're going to need more time to do the lights and the ceiling tiles beyond mid-October.
Okay.
It'll be a request to just extend it a month to do that portion of the work.
Okay. Anything else, anyone else? All right, any other announcements? We need to set a meeting for-
And we also need to set a meeting, and I know it's not an agenda item, Mrs. Posh.
No, but we can set meetings.
We need a meeting, just a executive session, it's going to probably take at least an hour, hour and a half to do contract.
So if we add announcements slash scheduling, we'll be good.
Yeah.
I had to talk about, I got to update the committee on the NEA contract.
Right.
So an executive?
Yes, that would be, and it'd be a separate day.
So, okay, so-
It's going to be killing not to meet.
Yeah, no, it's going to be a separate meeting.
Killing me.
Sorry. There's just no way we can tack it on to-
Good Lord.
No, the 29, 28 is the one we couldn't move to. Or slog through on the 27th?
No.
I mean, our regular session is in-
You won't-
All right.
It's just, their, the proposal's just too long.
Any, I mean, I know people don't like to use their Saturdays, but can anybody do, like, just a quick one on a Saturday morning?
I'm not a fan of that.
Well, you know what, you guys just schedule it, and if I can come, I'll come, if I can't, that's fine, as long as you have a-
Yeah, you two are the negotiating committee, so.
A Monday night?
Not so much.
No.
Monday's out, Saturday's out.
After the second.
But we have to do it, so when do we have to do it, Mike?
There's, we met back on March 1st, so we're now three weeks since we last met, we've had two meetings to date, but I can't proceed with the negotiations, so I don't have input from the committee.
How about the 28?
That's a Thursday, right?
That's a Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
It's next Wednesday.
A week from this week.
A week from tomorrow.
Hearing no opposition.
That's seven.
I'd like to ask you to use the library during that March 28.
No, we can use the conference room.
Can we use the conference room?
Yeah, I think we can use the building for March 28.
Did I approve it yet?
She's getting on in front of it.
Wow, yeah, I don't know.
Aren't you glad you stayed? 28 to 7?
Yes, that's fine.
28 to 7.
And it will just be that in exact session. Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Just a second, all those in favor?
The governor's closed the state for tomorrow.
She has. That's why Kayla's-